I'll go ahead and call the Grand County Fiscal Court meeting to order. It's Tuesday, August 6, 2024. It's now 6:02 PM. If everyone can stand for our Deputy Judge Executive Colton Simpson to lead us in invocation and continue to stand for the pledge.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we are so thankful for this day and thankful for the blessings of life, thankful for the sunshine. And Lord, we're just asking that you give wisdom to the court this evening. And Lord, may you continue to bless our community, bless each family represented here, and may all that we do be glorifying to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Jen, if I can have you call Roe?
Magistrate Humphrey?
Present.
Magistrate Coldiron?
Present.
Magistrate Riley?
Present.
Judge Chukdose?
Present.
Item five is the approval of the regular meeting minutes of July 16, 2024.
Having read the regular minutes from the meeting of July 16, 2024, I'll make a motion to approve as written.
I second.
Having motion made by Magistrate Humphrey, a second by magistrate Coldiron, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Here's all in favor, motion carries. Moving down to item 6A, fiscal matters, approval of the claims on the general fund, the road fund, the jail fund, along with all transfers presented dated August 6, 2024.
I make a motion to approve the claims against the general fund, road fund, and jail fund, along with the transfers as requested, dated August 6, 2024.
I'll second.
Having motion made by magistrate Riley, a second by magistrate Humphrey, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Here's all in favor, motion carries. Tonight, we have the approval of the second reading on ordinance number 0009-2024-0276. It's the amendment to the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget.
I make a motion for approval on the second reading on ordinance number 0009-2024-0276 in regards to the amendment to the 2024-2025 budget.
I will second.
Having motion made by magistrate Coldiron, a second by magistrate Riley. Jen, if you don't mind, call Roe.
Magistrate Humphrey?
Yes.
Magistrate Coldiron?
Yes.
Magistrate Riley?
Yes.
Judge Chukdose?
We don't have any old business or new business to report on tonight. Moving down to our reports, you all have in front of you the treasurer's report, animal shelters report, road supervisors' report, building inspectors' report, coroner, jailer, which you all receiving your information on the inmate count. You all have in front of you the sheriff's report. I know Sheriff Ryan Maines is with us. Is there any questions for the sheriff? If not, moving on down to judge's report, I don't have anything to report on at this meeting. Takes us down to the magistrates. Magistrate Humphrey, anything to report tonight?
Nothing to report.
Magistrate Coldiron?
No, I have nothing at this time.
Magistrate Riley?
No, thank you.
Okay. We're moving down to item 10. Anyone from the audience on a citizen's address for this fiscal court meeting? If not, I'll just rem-- oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Debbie.
Wait, wait.
Okay.
Sorry, Debbie Angel with Grand County News. I just have a couple of quick questions. You got the amendment to the 24-25 budget. What was that?
The amendment to the transfers of the revenue.
I mean, what?
On the loan, the transfer on the loan.
Okay, so you transferred some from the loan into the?
Yes.
No, that was just in the budget to reflect.
No, this was just the amendment of the budget. We had the first reading last meeting.
This is adoption. Okay.
We're just adopting that.
So this was the second reading?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Yes.
Okay, and then I did, I just want to follow up because I've asked before about the IDA, the industrial development. Is there any movement on that?
No, not at this time.
Nothing yet? Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Just want to remind everyone, our next meeting will be August 20, 2024, at 6:00 PM here in this courtroom in person. Also want to remind everyone, we have a scheduled for a public hearing at 6:30 tonight regarding the special ambulance taxing district. It is now 6:07. I'll go ahead and ask that adjourn from this meeting, will be in recess until 6:30 for the advertised public hearing.
I make a motion, we adjourn?
I will second.
Having motion made by magistrate Coldiron, a second by magistrate Riley, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Here's all in favor, we're now adjourned. As I said, we'll be adjourned till 6:30 for the public hearing. Thank you all.
We'll go ahead and call the public meeting to order. Jen, if you could, go ahead and call Roe.
Magistrate Humphrey.
Present.
Magistrate Coldiron.
Present.
Magistrate Riley.
Present.
Judge Chuckduff.
Present.
Item three, I need a motion to open the public hearing regarding the ambulance special taxing district.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion made by magistrate Riley, a second by magistrate Humphrey. All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Here's all in favor, motion carries. So I'll go ahead and start out what's brought us to this point discussing a ambulance taxing district. I'll lay everything out and then at that point I'll take comments from anyone in the audience. A little bit of background, on July 2nd, we had had the first reading on an ambulance district ordinance And I hope everyone in here has had a chance to read over the ordinance. Basically, the ordinance is creating a countywide taxing district, which includes the whole county except for Verona has a small section in their, in Grant County that they're covering. The residents of that area, which is about 40 residents, is paying the taxing district for services for foreign EMS. Now, the city of Crittenden elected a few years ago to create a ambulance taxing district in the city limits of Crittenden, and that's being provided, their negotiations actually with the city of Dry Ridge like the rest of the county is, is how they've been operating since they formed their taxing district. So at this point, we're just forming the taxing district to fulfill the rest of the county. Little bit of background, a little bit of history, this has been a conversation that's looked at fire and EMS together. We've looked back at the EMS end of it on the creating a district and it's, we're, the county is looking, and we're looking out for, as citizens of this county also, what is the best interest to serve the county. Currently, and I think most of you in this room knows how the operations is working, 2001, back around April of that year, the city of Dry Ridge received a license to perform services countywide. Since then, basically, the city of Dry Ridge has been funding ambulance services countywide since 2001, up until July 1st of 2019, at which time, county of Grant, our fiscal court along with the other three cities being the city of Crittenden, the city of Williamstown, and the city of Corinth, has been contributing funds since July 1 of 2019. The operations of an ambulance service is expensive, it's complex. We've been thankful for the last number of years, the city of Dry Ridge has been willing to operate it, but I think it's time that we need to look at, and that's what's brought us to this point, of looking at a way to secure this mechanism to fund ambulance services. Some of you may know, some of you may not know, that it's not a legal requirement like it is for us with the sheriff and the jails and certain things and the animal shelter. The county has no legal obligation to provide ambulance service. The cities don't have that obligation either to provide ambulance services, but we all know, in the world we live in as productive citizens, that we need an ambulance service. So we need to look at more of a secured mechanism to fund it, fund that ambulance service. No one wants to increase anything on taxes, we don't. The thing that concerned me is, by not doing it, one election could change this whole complex of how we're operating now. Dry Ridge has been grateful in providing that service, but at any time, current mayor has worked well with us, the other mayors have worked well on this method that we're going at, but one election could change it with either mayors and council that they decide they no longer want to provide ambulance service for the county. So the county, at some point, will be stuck with trying to provide service in some mechanism along with the other cities, because we all know that we need that services for our residents. So going back a little bit on contributions, the general fund since 2019, out of the county's general fund, has contributed over $2 million for ambulance services. Well, anytime our general fund is tight, obviously, and anytime that we continue to fund something that wasn't intended to be funded out of our general fund, it leaves us where we can't fund our law enforcement end of it, we can't fund our road system, our infrastructure for our roads, and it leaves us in a awkward position. On the other side of it is, is that with a taxing district, it's restricted funds. It can only be spent for an ambulance service. So anyone that would come into my position, these magistrates positions, and decide they don't want to fund it any longer, it leaves us in an awkward position, and it does with the city of Williamstown, if they decide not to contribute. The county in no way can continue to make up the difference for the city of Williamstown or the city of Corinth. Now, as I said before, the city of Crittenden already in advance created an ambulance district. My vision is that if this district is created, that at some point, the city of Crittenden's taxing district could come into the one county district and operates under one county district. Ultimately, if this passes, which our next second reading is actually on the 20th of August, and then after the 20th of August, there'd be a legal ad in the paper that it passed or didn't pass on the 29th, and if it does pass, then a board's created. And the mechanism of the board, per our ordinance, if anyone's had a chance to look it over, is five members. Of the five members, two appointments or magistrates that currently serve at that time on the Grant County Fiscal Court. The other three magis, or the other three are citizens at large that reside in Grant County that would serve on that board. A mechanism we would look at to create that is take resumes from people that have interest and background in emergency services to serve on that board, and then by ordinance is the boards are created by time term limits. The first three appointments, two of them will serve for one year, the other will serve for two years, and then thereafter, they'll all three serve for two-year terms, which will be staggered. So there will always be someone that would serve on that board that had some knowledge without cleaning out the whole board on reappointments. I guess that lays out, I'll take some comments from the magistrates on follow-up on anything I may have left out before we have any comments, and we'll try to answer everyone's question during this public hearing.
I think you covered it pretty well.
I would just reiterate, I know the majority of folks in this audience are very familiar with the current interlocal agreement that the counties and cities have with the city of Dry Ridge, but, you know, for the citizens that would likely watch this on YouTube later, it is a unique situation that we've had, a unique partnership, and to Judge Wood's point, one thing that is also unique is that could go away at some point in time. There is no mechanism in place that guarantees that interlocal agreement would continue, whereas a taxing district that's restricted funds would guarantee that that service would be provided, and I think you bring up an excellent point, because I hadn't considered that, as someone that's been in this seat for, you know, going on my third term, I hadn't considered that the city of Dry Ridge and that interlocal agreement could dissolve depending on who's at the city council level or who sits here, and when you think about providing a quality of life and a service to a community, that is something to be mindful of.
Okay, thank you, Jacqueline. The podium's up here, the only thing we ask, when you step up to the podium, if you can give us our names, so for record for the minutes, and if anybody has comment one way or another, for or against, we'd like to hear from the audience. Don't everybody jump up at once. Thank you, Chief.
Judge, magistrates, Lee Burton. Two roles, Crittenden Fire Department Chief, but also Chair of the City of Crittenden Ambulance Taxing District. I am speaking in favor of this ordinance. I think that it's been a long time coming. One of the things that I've always found distressing is the number of times that we are compared to Boone County and Kenton County when it comes to services that are offered to our civilians, our citizens, excuse me. I've been distressed for a long time over the fact that we've been forced to put a price tag on the price of human life, but unfortunately, the realism of the world is, we can only work with what monies we're able to bring in and put together. Now, somewhere along the line, we have to address what is for the common good. We pay for schools, but I have no kids that are in the school system. We pay for a library. I don't even know if I can get in the front door. I don't know if I can find the front door, but it's for those persons, and it is for the greater good. Dry Ridge took this on in 2001, and I retired from Dry Ridge Fire Department, and very proud of that, but I do see that this city, the Dry Ridge city, is being drained, and they are trying hand over fist to provide. Anytime they start talking about additional taxes, additional monies, there is someone screaming about they're being taxed enough. But unfortunately, it took this ordinance for everybody in the county to be fairly assessed a tax that is for the common good. And it's not going to do huge things right off. It's going to have to be a slow and steady process, but it is a start, and it is a concrete funding mechanism that we can now start in three, five, and seven-year increments, changing services that are offered, whether it is making sure Dry Ridge gets the support they need to continue, a countywide service that has its own units, or some other method that as of yet has not been thought of. But at least now, we've made a commitment to a concrete funding mechanism, and therefore, that change will come. I thank you for being brave enough to have this ordinance and for pushing it forward.
Well, thank you, Chief, for speaking. Dave, come on up.
David Rose, resident of the county. I've got a bunch of questions. Number one, I'm not against this ordinance, but the devil is in the details. And number one, what is the meaning of a special? This is an ambulance special taxing district. What is the meaning of special on this? I can't find it in the statutes of a special.
The statute refers to special taxing district.
Yeah.
Would you say that's because it's restricted?
Yeah, it's a quasi-
Restricted fund.
Okay, so due to it being restricted, based on-
It can only be used for-
Used for ambulance district.
Well, I thought in the statutes, if you, that I've read, that money can only be used for that, it can't be used for anything else, so that's why it's called a-
Special taxing district.
Well, it's called an ambulance taxing district, different than the fire district where fire, you can use EMS or whatever, I think in that maybe, but this is an ambulance taxing district. Anyway, I'm just trying to figure out what special means. This is supposed to be a citizen form, and I'm kind of at a loss right now, because I've been coming to county meetings for years, and I don't take the Grant County news anymore, so I don't know if this is published, but I'm looking for documented justification for the Grant County ambulance taxing district. We've had the local agreement, and I haven't seen any numbers. Now, there's supposed to be a committee or whatever that attends to the fire, to the ambulance and gets these reports. I haven't seen any documentation as to the reporting of the local, interlocal agreement in these years, since 2021, nothing, and there's supposed to be reports. The interlocal agreement between the city of Dry Ridge, Kentucky, Grant County, and the cities located therein from 1 July 2021 to 30 June 2024 states, the city of Dry Ridge, through the mayor and/or designated representative, shall report to each member's respective legislative body the following information, including but not limited to, A, the number of EMS runs inside the limits of the city of Dry Ridge, the number of EMS runs to each city and county of Grant, reimbursements and reimbursement rates of the city of Dry Ridge receives for the various types of runs, non-emergency transports, automobile accidents, jail runs, et cetera. Current financial audit report maintained by the city of Dry Ridge, haven't seen any of that, the financial audit for the personal cost on a quarterly basis, the budget itemization as to how personnel and cost payments are being used and applied on a quarterly basis or upon the request by the board, the annual yearly audit report, and I got that capitalized because there's supposed to be an annual yearly audit report reflecting personnel costs of the city of Dry Ridge EMS, the city of Dry Ridge shall provide, shall provide, not will provide, but shall, which is a must, no less frequently than annually, part of the existence of policies of liability insurance and workers' compensation insurance to parties of this government, and any further information or data provided by, requested by, and between the parties to this agreement. Now, we've got three years of data, runs that have been made anywhere into the county or into the cities, and what's that data show?
It shows it's increasing, just to back up on what you were just reading over, the public meeting for the 911 board that consists of the mayors of each one of the cities and myself, after that meeting, every meeting, Kevin Stave from Dry Ridge Ambulance Service and Ken Little, and also Greg Brockman, Mayor of Dry Ridge, is here present and presenting those reports, and they report all the runs with the addresses quarterly throughout the county, with the breakdown of each city and so on, and what the cost of the operations and all that, so it is, we do meet quarterly publicly for those meetings.
Okay, well, down the road here, I'm going to ask you some, for some numbers, and I hope you have them, because that's what we're all about.
I've got Dry Ridge here to maybe lay some of your answers out.
Okay, on KRS 108.140 Powers and Duties of Directors, number eight in particular, in addition to the special ed vol. tax, establish an equitable system of service charges to be collected from persons receiving emergency ambulance service for the district. The rate of this service charge shall be fixed, shall be fixed, not will be, but shall be fixed, in such amounts as can be reasonably expected to yield revenues not in excess of the cost of the operation and maintenance of the system, and for an adequate depreciation fund. So as things age, you're going to have to replace it, well, there should be like a little savings account in there beside what the actual costs are, and also to do the maintenance. Note, has a fee scheduled disclosure been posted and sent to duly authorized county and state agencies? They are supposed to, whatever these reasonable charges are for doing this service, they're supposed to post this with county and state agencies. Has that been done?
In the meetings, as far as covering the cost, is that what you're asking, Dave?
Whatever they have set up for cost to make a run, they're supposed to post, they're supposed, you know, you go to the grocery store right now and you buy a loaf of bread, it's a dollar. Well, what do they charge for an ambulance run? And whatever that is, at the going rate, they're supposed to post that with the county and with state agencies. That's, that's a directive. That's not one of those things, you know, I might and I might not, but that's supposed to be done, so everybody is apprised of what the rate, going rate is currently for a run.
That would be a question that would be answered by the Dry Ridge Kevin Stavey or city manager Ken Little.
But, but it is in writing that here's, it's going to cost this much to-
Okay. Just so you know, Dave, our interlocal agreement, not only with the county but also the cities, is to provide the service. These quarterly meetings is to show us, especially on increases, about the run numbers, and as I said, it's broke down to every address that the ambulance responds to, and then what the cost of their materials are, it's a pretty detailed list of what the cost of operations for the service.
Well, it'd be nice if the citizens would be apprised- Well, it'd be nice if the citizens would be apprised of this.
And their public, their public record, it's, there's so many documents that we just can't. Well, first of all, we pay quite a bit of money to advertise in the paper on just legal ads, but not even in the paper, but any of those records are available at our facility or the city of Dry Ridge's. And actually, most of that information you're asking for, Dry Ridge would have, since they're their provider.
It should, it should have been done on an audit. I mean, what I'm asking and what says right here is supposed to be audited at least annually in, in black and white. Based on the area size and population of Grant County, including an interstate highway system passing through it, is there a formula for determining the number of ambulances needed and required personnel to staff and around-the-clock 365-day operation?
Kevin, can I refer those questions to you?
There, there is though. There is recommendations that you could ask. Or recommendations that you could ask the office of EMS. There are recommendations that they could make. How many ambulances per call is there to staff? If they're planning one ambulance per mountain call, there's a recommendation. Unlike that, we're roughly three mountain calls per service. So using their recommendations, there are more than staffed three ambulances.
Okay. Are you staffing, fully staffing three ambulances?
Yes.
Why not? Okay. Good answer. When in need of multiple ambulance service, who determines the priority and what about interstate versus a county need? Who makes that call? I know we call 911 and the dispatcher says, well, go here, go there. But who makes the call? I think with us having an interstate with accidents and that, we're more subject to, to me, stupid stuff like that happening, which is going to interfere with the normal routine in the county and the cities for that matter.
That's what happens to law enforcement too, and the sheriff can verify that. So is your question, if two calls come in at the same time, one on the interstate and one out in the unincorporated area of the county, how do they respond first?
Yeah, who, who makes that determination and what-
Normally, and I'll let them answer it, but normally it's based off the type of injury. So if you have someone having a heart attack versus someone with a broken foot, they're going to respond, I would assume, to the heart attack first that would get priority.
And don't we also have neutral aid agreements?
That's correct.
Yes.
Surrounding counties?
Depending on location, Walton responds to the Crittenden locations just because of the location. Where Owen County may respond closer, certain areas of Corinth area.
Well, we used to have a for-profit ambulance service too. But I, I don't think that they get into the county anymore. I think they're just designated hospital to-
Transports.
Yeah, transport.
And that's what brought this all in 2001 where we're at today.
Based on a 10 cent per $100, what is the expected annual revenue from this tax?
In 2025, it's anticipated to bring in $1,676,207. And that's in Exhibit D that was part of the plan of service that was with the ordinance.
Okay.
And that's based off of Eli Anderson. I don't know if Eli is still here with PVA. We work closely with him to be able to compile these figures.
So I looked up on the inter-local agreement. This in 2425, if we went with that agreement, Dry Ridge would be paid $1,213,979.44. That's from Corinth, Crittenden, Williamstown, and Grant County.
Yes.
The unknown is Dry Ridge. What is Dry Ridge's operating cost for ambulance service?
Well, there's a couple other unknowns other than Dry Ridge, and they could speak on it. Ours is based off the tax base only. That's not including the billing, which Dry Ridge does billing. And 800,000, 900,000, somewhere, give or take, is the billing. Plus, there's a $10,000 grant for sure that each year they, they receive. They have since 2001, which is not much. But that also is not including any other grants that are available.
Okay. So what is the total annual ambulance EMS cost to the city of Dry Ridge? Dry Ridge and the county and wherever they go, what's the total?
I don't have that going for me. But I can explain to you, basically, they translate the city receives for EMS service to all the top inspectors. Whatever remaining is divided amongst all the different counties. And according to percentage of runs that remain in distorted data, so if we're saying if 30% of the run volume is in the city of this county, that means that we're responsible for 30% of the cost.
And originally, Dave, that's how it started out. We paid per run each entity. And then, and that formula sort of continued on. It was just done a little differently.
I think it was $46 a run, if my memory-
Yeah, and it wasn't, it wasn't covering it in the very beginning. City of Dry Ridge residents were consuming the bulk of the cost.
But that's the unknown. What is the total cost to run an ambulance service out of the city of Dry Ridge? I mean, for personnel, for equipment, to make the runs? What is that total figure? And then what is, what do they get in payment for that from making the runs? The individual that they pick up is responsible for that charge.
That, that's a variety, and they can answer it. I mean, Medicare only pays a set amount. You can't charge any more than that. But let me refer, I'm sorry, Kevin, to keep putting you on point, but-
And you got that in black and white, the cost broken out? Because that's a secret number. The cost versus, yeah, it is, the cost versus the staffing and the equipment and all that. You know, versus what you're taking in.
It's not simply public.
Well- I don't, I don't know how this was advertised, but if this is supposed to been a citizen's thing, there are very few citizens here, you know, for 10 cents on $100, which is a dollar, a thousand. And if you've got a $200,000 home, you're going to get taxed $200 on this. Everybody in the county is going to get on this same structure. I would have thought that we would have published all this information in the paper. So all citizens would-
Well, it was, actually, the legal aid came out of the paper July 25th.
Okay, well, like I said, I don't, I didn't take the paper, but-
But I mean, besides the July 25th public notice, statutorily, we had to, to put in the paper with, you know, no more than seven day, or no less than seven days, no more than 21 days. It's actually been talking, you've been at all of our meetings, we've been discussing.
But what I'm, what I'm asking is, is the, is the average citizen apprised of all this information about the number of runs that are made everywhere in the county?
If they ask.
Well.
They can come here and, it's all public record. Whatever we have in writing, they can come and get. As far as us sending a copy to everybody, there's no way we could do that.
No, but I, I'm just saying, it would have been nice to have this in the paper broken out about, here's what it's costing to run an ambulance service and the deficit thereof. We're going to be short this much. Therefore, instead of going on the local, inter-local agreement like we've been doing, we're going to have a taxing district instead. And the money can only be spent for ambulance service and personnel and equipment and whatever. It would have been nice to have all that printed out. So the average person that's going to be paying for this is going to see where their money's going, how it's being used.
Well, the, the tax rate is, is in there, but, I mean, you're talking, and I'm not, don't quote me, Debbie, five grand or better to advertise that much information if you could compile it in the paper.
You know what? That would be money well spent. I guarantee you, because if you can get the buy-in, this is, I don't want to go off on deep end, but we had the payroll tax, and there was a lot of things about the payroll tax, you know? And now we got this tax coming. And I don't know, as bad as the economy is now, this is going to be a real awakening to the person out there, you know? And there's got to be some understanding. It would have been better if we would have paved the way with some numbers and understanding. This is where we've been, and if we keep going like this, we're in deep trouble, you know? So therefore, we want to have this tax, and 10 cents is the max. I mean, are we sure that's what we need to do, 10 cents? We can't do 7 cents? Has it all been?
It's easier, it's easier to decrease it than increase it. And here's the thing about it too, Dave. Once this board gets formed, they're going to be in charge of the ambulance. It doesn't necessarily automatically go to Dry Ridge. Okay? If there's somebody else who wants to come in and bid on this service, they have the right to come in and bid on this service. It doesn't go to Dry Ridge automatically.
Well, that would be a for-profit entity then because-
Very well could be.
Dry Ridge is a government, same as Williamstown and Crittenden.
Yes.
And not for, for profit.
But what would you prefer? Would you prefer us just turn everything over to Dry Ridge? Or would you prefer us to say, okay, who's going to give us the best bang for the buck?
Well.
When you're kind of spending your tax dollars?
I don't know. In a way, I really like Dry Ridge.
We do too.
Because it's us, you know?
I agree.
And if there's a sense of urgency, these people are going to bust their behinds to get out and take care of whatever needs to be done.
I don't think you would have found an argument out here, this, forward here, ever, but-
And that's why I, you know, I'm for this.
We're obligated, I believe, that we have to offer, here's what we have. Who can give us the best bang for the buck?
Yeah, as long as it's us.
I agree.
I don't, I don't want to pay some private for profit because that'll just keep escalating. As soon as gas goes up or whatever goes up, then that, everything's going up.
The intent, and obviously, and I know sometimes people get confused, the Grant County Fiscal Court is not running, the Grant County would not run the Grant County ambulance service. Obviously, it's a board. Is the intent of it is for them to create their own ambulance service internally. And they would utilize personnel from Dry Ridge because that's the personnel and Crittenden and anyone else that are EMTs and paramedics to serve on the ambulance service.
So let me ask, Dry Ridge, do the citizens of Dry Ridge, do they pay for ambulance service now in their taxes? So, is this going to be added to what they pay or?
It's done general fund. It's not a restricted fund that they have to provide ambulance service. They've been doing it with their general fund dollars like, like we've been doing in inter-local agreement.
They don't have a separate line item on their tax bill saying EMS for the city of Dry Ridge.
That's what I'm saying. If someone else came into office could say, well, we're going to put more money to the police department and not for an EMS.
Not good, not good. Okay, well, I'm done. I just-
And any of that that you were asking about is happening. Dry Ridge is the quickest way to get a lot of those records. I have the quarterly reports that's presented to us. But some of the details you're asking, they have all of it. And it's all public record for anybody to ask.
Okay, again, I'm, I'm for the tax, but I'd like to see an accounting for it. The reason we have to go this way, the cost analysis that led us to this.
Well, it's actually more than just the cost analysis to do it. It's, it's the operations, how it's operating now. Dry Ridge has done a great job, but what if Dry Ridge quits doing that for the whole county? I don't, I don't believe in any way they'd ever quit for their citizens and their city limits. But I'll be honest, I'm surprised the mayor is providing services for the whole county at some of it on the cost of the city of Dry Ridge.
I'll make like I didn't hear that. That's okay. There's money to be made anyway. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Anyone else?
Patrick Whalen. Just a couple of quick questions. Are the board members going to be paid?
No.
No. The decision to have the two magistrates, why would it not be one of each city involved? One person for each city?
Well, the board's made up of five. And since the city or the county is creating the ordinance, the other counties, it's created the same ordinance, has put representatives on from the fiscal court.
I just, it sounds like there wouldn't be equal representation from each one of the cities, which-
Well, and with-
There's five corporate, or five cities, so it just would make sense to me personally. Not, I'm, not that I'm against it or anything.
Who's the five cities?
Jonesville, Crittenden, Corinth, Williamstown.
Be the five fire departments, not the incorporated.
You're saying five fire departments, not five cities?
No, I'm not speaking for fire departments. I mean, I consider Jonesville to be part of the-
Their county.
Yeah, part of the county.
Yeah, they don't have a city castle, they don't have city-
That's fine, but-
Same as Sherman, same as Mountain Zion, okay? So, yeah, there's, there's a big difference there, Patrick.
Okay, that's fine.
But with, with most boards, some of them statutorily required, others are not. But we try to appoint board members. The biggest problem is finding people interested to serve on a board. But the ones that are, we try to appoint them throughout the county.
Okay.
From one end to the other.
It was just a question. All right.
Sure. No, no upset at all. We're just trying to understand what you're getting at.
One, I understand $1 million is what it's going to, 1.1 million, is that what the number was?
No, 1.6.
Yes.
1.6.
So that, that's just in staffing numbers, that would probably only cover two or three ambulances plus facilities and maintenance.
And that's not including-
Drugs and license.
Obviously, the small grant in the billing. The billing's not included in that. That's only the tax base.
So the question there would be, would it truly be up to the board to say, we want to start our own, would it be Grant County ambulance service? Or would it be handed off to the best bidder?
It would be up to the board to decide.
Go either way.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hello? So Kurt, it's Anita Salfeld. We live in Grant County. So again, like the gentleman over here, we don't mind taxes for, you know, the greater good of the, the community in the county. We're just asking for accountability, okay? So we've got a couple of questions. So it's an ambulance special taxing district. When special taxing districts have been done in the past, has there ever been an end date put to these kinds of things? Or have they always been open-ended?
As far, the ordinance is open-ended until it's resolved, I mean, until it's dissolved.
Okay.
The Kentucky, the Kentucky statute does provide a dissolution.
How to dissolve? Yes, there is a process.
That you can remove the taxing district.
Can you put a date on it if you wish?
I don't believe so.
No, I wouldn't think you could do that.
Okay.
Because it would be up to the board at that time, if you're creating the ordinance right now. You know, you're taking that flexibility away from them to do that if they felt, feel it's, you know, I don't know why they would not feel it would be economical to go away from that because they have such a good- from that, because they have such a good control, or should have a control of the district at that time.
Okay. If it's not, if it's not successful, if this happens to be not successful, would the board recommend to the fiscal court that the tax be stopped? Could they? And would you repeal it at that time?
I mean, anything could be brought before the court, asking if something's not working to do away with the ordinance.
Are you understanding where I'm coming? Like, say, for example, like, at this point, we're saying that this agreement with the city of Dry Ridge, with their interlocal, is not working for you. So there's a possibility that their ambulance services is going to possibly dissolve?
Well, it's in the ordinance, if for some reason Dry Ridge is not able to provide that service-
Right.
Until the board creates their own ambulance service, then it's in there that they could contract with someone else. So hopefully, there could be an entity out there that they could contract with.
So, well, let's say, for example, Williamstown, Dry Ridge, Corinth, Jonesville, 10 years from now, they all have their own ambulance district, and there is no need for the county to have this.
Yeah, if things would change-
Kind of dissolve and the tax be taken away from the taxpayers. And if you come back and you repeal it, the tax go away, is what I'm asking.
Yes.
If this passes, what happens to the Dry Ridge ambulance services under this plan?
Well, we're under an interlocal agreement right now till June of 25.
Okay.
At which time, if this passes, the board, once the board is formed, and there's statutory timelines that, we have 30 days after the last of the advertisement on the 29th of August. Before I quote that, let me make sure, yes, August 29th would be the legal notice, and then after, within 30 days after the legal notice, then a board would have to be appointed, and at which time, the board, they have quite a few things, they've gotta put in order, they've gotta get their bylaws together, they're gonna have to hire an attorney, so there's not a conflict with an attorney from the county or the cities, because they're a standalone board operating solely on their own.
Okay. So we're in an agreement with them till June of 2025? So our hope is that the program gets up and running and effective, I guess, so that July of 2025 will no longer be in an agreement with them?
No, then the board, the only reason that's set in place in our interlocal agreement is once the taxing district's created, then it leaves the cities and the counties out of doing the interlocal agreement. The interlocal agreement, as it is with Chief Burton as chair of the taxing district in Crittenon, they contract with Dry Ridge currently.
Right.
Now, as them acting as a board, they're smaller, 'cause they're just a small section of the county, is they could have their own ambulance service, which is what the county, I would hope, is the direction the county district is gonna go.
Okay. So, okay, so if I'm understanding this right, the tax money that you're going to be collecting, right?
That the district will collect, yes.
That the district will collect, is in hopes that every entity has its own ambulance?
No, the taxing district could be a countywide district that will provide those services at some point.
Okay.
And the board would be in a position to decide, you know, what path to go to provide the service?
Okay.
And what would go away, though, would be the current intact interlocal agreement, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the board doesn't decide to go with the current provider, which is the city of Dry Ridge, or a third party, or in-house.
It just means that they're gonna bid out?
Yes.
Okay. So it can be Dry Ridge?
It could be.
Absolutely.
Okay. It could be the city of Williamstown provides its own ambulance?
If, wow, and there's a whole lot that has to be involved with that too, as far as getting a certificate of need. This would be something that the attorney would need to speak to.
Okay.
If this goes in place, the only entity that it's its own taxing district today is the city of Crittenon, which they put that in place to be able to even afford to participate in the interlocal agreement. They, it's my understanding that there would need to be a petition at the city levels-
Right.
If any city wanted to provide their own service, and, which would then entitle them to get a certificate of need, and I think you had said, what, something like 30% of the voters in that particular district to petition, I'm assuming to their city council, to say that they would want to take on their own ambulance. And so that would be something that the city of Dry Ridge could consider, Williamstown could consider. And directionally speaking, part of what's attractive about a special taxing district at the county level is for there to be consistency.
Okay.
And it's my understanding at current state that the city of Crittenon would look to abolish their 10-cent taxing district, because the county taxing district would be coming in at the same cost, and it would be a part of a uniform decision done by the board.
Okay. I think what this gentleman here was trying to convey, and I may be wrong, and I don't wanna speak for him, I'm just speaking for myself, is it would've been nice to know here, in a hearing with everyone, what Dry Ridge's numbers were, to have a comparison, right, to say, okay, well, this is what we're, you know, projecting, and this is what we're providing for your 10 cents money, right? And this is what, you know, what we currently have, I think.
Well, and the reality is, is the 10 cents doesn't exist yet. That's what we are directionally trying to get to. The only thing that exists today is their interlocal agreement, and then them doing a formula of deciding the cost share based off of where prior runs have been made, and if it was the unincorporated area, the county was billed. If it was in the cities jurisdictions, the cities were billed. That's, in my opinion, one of the beauties of this taxing district, is these questions you and Mr. Rose are asking, like that type of granularity, that absolutely would be a part of the mechanism of what the board does. But in fairness, some of that same type of criteria and data points are shared at their quarterly 911 meetings that they have. And I agree with you, I recognize citizens probably don't even know where they meet, or that forum does exist, but it has existed since the interlocal agreement went into place many years ago.
But it does bring light for this type of hearing, for this meeting, for the little citizens that are here, to see at least some kind of numbers, that, you know, you're wanting us to agree and participate in this. I mean, the vote is yours, the vote is up to you, right? But we're trying to say, hey, you know, we want, we want to support you, right? We want to be on your side. Tell us why, right?
And possibly, I don't know, Mr. Little, if you intend to share call volumes and what the landscape looks like in this public forum, I don't know if, with them being the provider today, I don't know if that was something that was going to be discussed tonight or not.
Okay, I have a couple more questions, sure, before he comes up. If there is a shortfall of money, where's it expected to come from?
It probably will come from the county.
Great question.
From the county?
Yeah.
From who? From us? From where?
Yeah, from fiscal court.
From fiscal court.
From us?
Yeah.
Right. So are you gonna ask us for more money?
No.
Okay. So you're robbing Peter to pay Paul?
Well, currently, we're spending around $700,000 right now. So hopefully, it would be a whole lot less than that-
Okay.
That we would have to subsidize, if we have to subsidize.
Right, okay.
You know, our goal naturally is not to be able to subsidize. We're hoping that once this taxing district goes in, that it's enough money to operate adequately and have-
Based off of the district.
Based off the district, district monies coming in.
And that's part of, you know, Mr. Rose's question earlier about why not six cents, or five cents, or seven cents? I think that is part of the risk of not having a crystal ball, not knowing what direction that the board would go in, because the board can always lower the tax, you know, a few years down the road, if there's enough monies there to provide the service, absolutely we would expect the board to lower that, but I also think it is a risk, if we didn't entertain going in at that threshold, because of the general fund would be in a position to have to subsidize it, which is exactly what we've been doing since we've been paying for ambulance service, both at the county level and the city levels, with the exception of Williamstown put a fee on some of their utilities to help pay, and the city of Crittenon implemented their own taxing district. Was it three years ago, Lee?
So, just a quick question. This money that we're gonna get taxed on, that money's going into a special fund, it's not going into your general fund?
No, it's not.
No, it's the general fund.
Cannot be taken out of it at all.
It actually does not even come through the Grand County Fiscal Court, because it's like the library board. We have no control of the library board and their funds.
So when the sheriff collects the taxes, it would go to that board, and it would go into their bank account? It wouldn't even come to the courthouse? Good question.
And that's how it's operating currently, the past three years in the city of Crittenon. It's not going to the city of Crittenon, it's going to the Crittenon Fire District, or Crittenon Ambulance District Board.
You go ask the city of Crittenon what they're paying for ambulance, and they're gonna send you that man right there, their chief, and he's gonna have to answer the question, 'cause they have no clue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dipidard, from Dry Ridge. I just, I guess I'm gonna ask the elephant in the room, why do we keep hitting the same people for the money over and over again? I understand we're the taxpayers, I understand that. We have a whole lot of visitors coming into this county now. We have Airbnbs that we didn't have before, we have an ARC. Why are we not taxing those people? I'm, I work in this county, and I get a county tax, the income tax.
Occupational tax, yes.
Yes. I'm sure, because I work in the city of Williamstown, that's gonna be the next tax that's gonna be added in, and I'm also a property owner. So I'm getting hit three times. And by far, I understand, I'm, we're not the only person in the county getting hit three times, but I think there's a whole lot of money in this county that's coming in that we're not tapping into.
But fortunately, we're not able to... When you talk about Airbnbs, you're talking about tourism tax. Okay? We don't get that tourism tax. That goes to the Tourism Commission here in Grand County.
We get a commission to collect their tourism tax for them.
And that's all we get, is just a commission of that.
And that's all, that's all statutory, that's out of our control, Wanda. The tourism tax, it's restricted money that can only be regenerated for tourism. Now, the ARC, there was a tax incentive, the city of Williamstown worked with them years ago, when that came in, they will be paying this tax that's going in on the ambulance as well, because of their property values. So we will receive from the ARC itself, and any businesses that have prospered with their businesses based off of the ARC being here. And even the property owners that own the Airbnbs, because what's happened with the Airbnbs, the assessments on those properties have went up-
Right.
-because they've actually rehabbed those properties to make them nice Airbnbs.
But when, when you travel to a different state, you stay at a hotel, and there's the hotel tax, and then there's the city tax within the hotel tax, and then there's another tax, you get a whole list of taxes.
Right.
And it just seems like we're not grasping-
Well, they're all restricted too, on the taxes on hotels. Any of the city taxes, some states allow it, other states don't, and Kentucky's tax structure doesn't allow a lot of taxes that the state of Tennessee has-
Okay.
On hotels.
And it's a great question, 'cause a lot of citizens think, oh, because the ARC encounter came in, that there's, you know, significant monies that could be funneled certain ways, and the majority of it is restricted, at least in the state of Kentucky.
Okay. I have another question, just only because I'm kinda familiar with the fire EMS. I realize we, Dry Ridge shouldn't be paying for people out in the county, and I'm a people out in the county, so, and there's got to be a way to do this. I'm really concerned with, though, that, Roger, you had said something about possibly when this taxing district comes in, that they may contract out. And that's concerning to me for many reasons, one being, I'm pretty sure most of the employees at Dry Ridge are people that live down here.
I agree.
So if we contract out, those people are out of jobs, most of them. Maybe, maybe they'll go work for the contract company. That's always a possibility.
That's a possibility as well.
Right. And that would, okay, if that happens, that happens, but we've got equipment tied up there, we have all this money that's already been invested, and it just seems, if we contract out, we have this surplus of equipment and employees and all of this stuff that we've already put money into, we've already paid the taxes to come up with all of this stuff, and now we contract out to somebody, we have all this equipment, now we sell all the equipment. Great. But this contract company now decides, okay, now we're going up with our fees, and we don't have the money any longer to say goodbye to the contract company, buy all our equipment again, and refund a fire department, or an EMS, or whatever we're doing. So I do have a big concern with looking at a contract company. We need to kinda like somehow get everybody on the same page and work together.
I agree.
And get these departments working together.
And that's the whole reason to do this, and if there's a contract company out there, the county and the city would already be contracted with them if they could do it cheaper than Dry Ridge. And I'm with you, I worked public services my whole life in this county. I'm gonna push that we continue to operate as we're operating today, and that this board will create an ambulance service with people from our county providing the services as I provided to this county for 30-some years. So, you know, AMR's not here, they left in 2001, and that was the concern I had when I took office in 2019, is that, my concern was AMR was not gonna provide the service that we were currently getting from Dry Ridge, and that was the whole reason AMR left and Dry Ridge stepped up to the plate-
Yep.
-because they weren't responding to people's houses timely when they were having heart attacks. That's what got Dry Ridge in the position they're in in 2001.
Yep. And it's still going on, 'cause-
You know, knowing that two of the board members will be two of these three magistrates that have served on the board, and the other three, we will be searching and hope to get resumes from people that have backgrounds in EMS, that will be willing to serve on the board, some financial backgrounds, so that they can make these sound decisions.
Fair enough. I just, I hope you, I hope you all consider whoever is on that board, that we do have people here that have put blood, sweat, and tears into our departments, whether it be Crittenon, Williamstown, Dry Ridge, Corinth, whatever, Jonesville, that the departments themselves mean a lot to these people, and those of us that are volunteers, maybe not as much as they used to, but those of us that have been volunteers over the years have been, put time into this, and we're invested in our departments. I guess that's all, that's all I can say. I just wished it was somewhere else that we could come up with the money and not affect our employees, our, we need to get it from the people that are, that don't live here.
It's hard to do.
Son of a Greek.
Thank you, Wanda. Kevin, you had your hand up.
I think that could be something that the board could.
It would be at the board, but under the KRS.
Yeah, I don't know.
It does state that they have the ability to contract or do whatever they may. So, you know, I think you might get into a little bit of the legal situation on that.
That was just my hearing.
That's fine.
You know, even if the board contracts with the City of Dry Ridge, the City of Dry Ridge is still going to have the option to pull. And whoever.
And, and that definitely will be...
At the end, everybody's going to be protected to the max.
That's definitely an issue that the board would be considering. The options comparing apples to apples on the services they're getting until that time that they can afford their own service. Anyone else?
The question that came up is dissolution of this tax. If you look at 108.160, dissolution of single city or county districts, 108.170, dissolution of multi-county or multi-city districts, and 108.180, withdrawal of membership by city, county, or unincorporated areas. And it says here that there has to be a petition filed to be able to do this. And 25% I think it says are greater of the voting residents.
I think I said...
And then it's got to be put to the people, too. I mean...
Correct.
To be voted on. You just can't arbitrarily back out.
Yes.
Anyway, that's the legality of it. And we don't want outsiders. If we've got the right board member composition, then they'll be for this county and not looking elsewhere.
I agree 100% with you, David. Diane?
Diane Morgan, Dry Ridge, former employee of Dry Ridge Fire and EMS. I retired a year and a half ago for physical reasons. I've served Grand County as an EMT 40-plus years. And I love the EMS and the fire. I was very happy a few months ago when I heard that there was possibly going to be a fire EMS tax in district. And I was so happy because I thought, I have waited for that for a long time. And then it didn't happen. And now we have the possibility of an EMS district. And I vote for it 100%. And I hope that you will vote for it 100%. A few years ago, when Dry Ridge was in the dilemma, I'm going to say, of whether to continue operating ambulance service in just the city or extending it out into the county and then making the other cities work with them in that agreement you've been talking about. I could not hardly stand the thought that I live a half a mile from the city limits of Dry Ridge, and there would be no ambulance provided for me. Life has to matter more than money. I have taken care of so many people in this county that I know. And when I see these people now, they'll say, oh, you were on that ambulance run when I was. And I say, yes, I was. And it's to the point that I'm so happy for what Dry Ridge has done to keep an ambulance service going. And the men and women that currently run with Dry Ridge, same as when I was there, are compassionate. They care about the people. They care about the care that is provided by the service. And you're not going to find that from a lot of people who come from the outside. So, I truly hope that this EMS tax works and that it's able to keep the current employees employed. You know, I hate to think of them losing jobs because of some outsiders coming in. But I'm truly happy that the county is finally taking this step. And I totally approve 100% for you to please get this done.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Bob?
Bob, you're from out in Jonesville. Wanda brought up some things, and I don't think any of us in here is wanting to get rid of anybody or not have an ambulance service or the fire department or anything else. It's just a matter of how we're going to pay for it. I think Wanda brought up some good points about the ARC, hotels, Airbnbs. Roger, you said something about we are not allowed to tax an Airbnb. Is that correct?
The tourism is who gets the tax off of the Airbnbs.
I understand.
And we receive a fee for collecting that tax.
Yes, but why can't the county have its own tax on an Airbnb?
I think we can, can't we?
Judge, I'll, I'll refer to you. Do you know?
I do. I can find out.
Because that's a huge, huge part of what's going on in this county. And we're missing a boat on this as far as...
How many Airbnbs are owned by people in this county?
We just, I was just getting ready to book an Airbnb in Michigan. The advertised rate was $140. And it caught fire. By the time I booked it or got ready to book it and looked at all the fees, it was $320.
Yeah.
Now, they had a county tax, they had a city tax, they had a fire tax, they had a tourism tax, all the things that we're missing out on.
And some of, some of...
You could have your own fire and EMS tax on an Airbnb if you want. I mean, if the state...
Depending on Kentucky statutes.
If the statute allows that.
If the statute allows.
And if the statute doesn't allow that, then we as citizens need to address that with the legislators.
I agree.
I don't have a problem with that. But I don't want to sit here and say, we can't do this, when we can, and we're overlooking it. That's what, I mean, if you all don't know, you don't know. But we need to find the answers to this.
I know that I have spoke to legislation, like even for an example, with the amount of tourism that's coming in and that the fact that the tourism is restricted funds, would they consider reallocating some of those restricted funds for roads, for public safety? And I know, I don't know if anyone's ever filed to have it, but it seems like it's been stalemate. But I continue to ask because I know for us, we've got a million-plus visitors coming and utilizing our roads.
Exactly.
But the tourism tax is restricted. And so, like, I know I continue to ask if there's any modification to that that could go back. And because it's not just us, it's Boone County, it's Lexington, it's Louisville.
It's everybody. It's all the way across the Commonwealth. I mean, there's, there's Airbnbs everywhere. I mean, they're, they're all over the Commonwealth. So, I mean, it's just a huge pot of money that we're not tapping that could pay for all this in a blink of an eye, no problem. Now, I don't know what the tourism, you guys get a little fee for collecting their money. And I don't know what gets delegated back to us for what and how much.
It's four, four percent.
Three.
Is it three?
3% out of, how much are they collecting off of that?
$775,000 last year.
And they, we got 3%?
Yeah.
That's a pit.
And that's, and you're right. And I have talked to legislators, continue to talk to, because every county, Owen County, Pendleton County, none of them are bringing the tourism dollars we are. So, they need to sit and look at some tax restructure where that if someone's bringing in over a half a million dollars in tourism, that a certain percentage is, is allocated for public safety, roadways that these tourists are using. I mean, it's the same thing larger places, Gatlinburg. I mean, look at that. Now, it goes back to the same thing. Their tax laws allow certain things. The only thing I'm aware of we could do to Airbnbs, but then you've got to be consistent, is we could charge a different business license to the property owner to operate that business, and then they would pass that cost on to the, the person who's renting the Airbnb. So, there's, there's some mechanism to do that. That's the only thing as far as statutorily I know we could probably do.
Is there any way we can check on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And dig into that a little more?
That is being worked on. Yeah, that's being looked at hard.
That's got to be looked at. There's got to be a way to get money out of that. It's being done. I know what you're saying is Kentucky laws are different. I get that. But that can be changed. But if there's something in there, an immediate aspect that we could do, if that's one way to do it, I don't care. Or even if it's a, you know, some other type of luxury tax that the county can throw on it, I don't care. But we need the money out of that.
And that's something we'd have to check. If we can charge a higher business license to a certain entity, that's the only thing I'm uncertain without doing some more looking into.
I mean, like, okay, now I'm not familiar. I know the, a lot of hotels are coming in. I don't, I'm sure there's a city tax on those, or is that correct? Do we know that? Anybody?
Ken, I don't know what city.
I don't think they do, Bob.
None of them pay a city tax? Once again, the cities are messing around.
The transit tax goes to the tourism.
Well, they're charged a 3% head and bed. So, any, any Airbnb, any hotel, any camper, RV spot.
But once again, that just, that goes to the tourism. Once again, the city's not getting any tax, or the county's not getting any tax.
No.
By statute, you're not allowed.
Yeah.
Because I, I try to think back on like hotel receipts I've seen in, in the State of Kentucky. And like Wanda said, she's right. Like Tennessee has quite a bit of different types of fees.
Most any place you do. Florida pays no state tax because, income tax, because of all the tax on the tourism.
Absolutely.
Same way with the, you know, hotel rooms, anything else you pay. There's always a, there's always a tourism tax on it.
That's what makes us unique. Sort of like Florida. I mean, Florida's where everyone vacations.
Yep.
You know, no, nobody vacations most of Kentucky other than tourist attractions. So, you know, if they can change some statutes, especially with that tourism tax.
But once again, like I said, I'm not opposed to any of this. I'm just opposed to how it's being paid for and how that number came to effect. And that's, I think what this gentleman was getting at was, okay, we're going to get charged this. How do we come to that number? That's, and there's nothing here to show that. I shouldn't have to run over to all the fire departments and pick up papers and try to feed through this. This should have been on, up there on that screen, broke down and say, this is all the runs. This is how much it's cost. This is how much money we need. And here's where it's coming from. If we can't come up with something, another way to pay for it.
And that is a fair observation, but I think that that will be what this board will do, where we are one entity paying into an interlocal agreement now. And because I see what you're saying, like, some would have thought the current mechanism, the current program that we're all participating in, because the county isn't providing it, it's the city providing it. So, I mean, I see what you're saying, like ideal state, that they would have provided their call volume just to see what the cost is today. But I don't, I don't know if the board will operate differently and, and maybe this cost comes down than what this interlocal agreement is.
Right. And, and that's down the road. But for right now, for you telling me as a citizen that, hey, we're wanting to do this, well, we'd have no numbers here to show you why we came up with this number to raise your taxes.
Well, I could, for my vote, right now, we've got almost $700,000 coming out of the general fund that, that we do not have to pay what we're being asked to pay, our portion. And, and that's part of creating the taxing district is to fund it.
And I get that. This is what I'm saying is, I just wish that this information would have been black and white fluid. So, we could look right, straight up and go, okay, there's your numbers. There's where it's coming from.
We're paying 700 and some thousand. What's Crettonen pay?
209.
209. What's Williamstown pay?
A little over 300,000.
So, yeah, that's, that's not, at Dry Ridge itself, how do you all come up with your portion?
About runs. They're taking their budgets and they're dividing it for runs. And each entity is paying that cost.
So, what's the number on the tax? If you go with the 10% or the 10 cents on the 100, how much money is that going to generate?
1.6 million.
1.6 million.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, again, we're hoping.
That's why I was hoping that those numbers would have been run, I think.
Right, right.
Yep.
A great point. And we're hoping that this money will be sufficient to provide adequate and good service.
Because Dry Ridge is providing excellent service. They're not providing the services we need just because of the funding. And that's what they were talking about, the additional ambulances with the formulas. It's not the service they're providing. It's second to none. It's the issue that they don't have what they need to adequately, adequately serve the county.
Right, right. I get that. Is there any place we could look to find where the statute states that counties not allowed to charge an Airbnb or anything?
I'll tell you that. I don't know, but we could find it.
You can come up with that for them?
I've seen, if it's there, yes, we can find it.
I appreciate it. Thank you all for your time.
Thanks, Bob.
Chadadard, Mountain Jonesville. So, informing the taxing district, what's the cap that the district can raise the taxes yearly if they, if they choose? And is there a cap?
It is capped at 10 cents.
10 cents per hundred.
Yeah, that's statutorily that it cannot go up past 10 cents.
So, that's, that's it done?
That's the tax.
That's by statute.
If, if they fall through, coming out of the general fund, is there a way at all to raise that?
No.
If they're not insured. So, we're done at 10 cents?
Yeah.
So, we might fall through year after year after year with this board?
We're hoping not.
Okay. I just, is, is there another way or another board that could be formed? Chapter 75, chapter 75A? What, what?
Yeah, there's, there's other statutes allow, as Diane said, with the fire EMS, fire departments that operates with an EMS. You know, there's several different mechanisms of boards.
Okay. With...
But you can add something else just strictly with an ambulance for a higher tax.
Okay. So, with, with our anticipation that this is probably going to continue to cost more money because of the economy, right? How, how do we anticipate making that change?
Well, what will happen too is your property ta, as your property tax goes up, then that amount would go up.
Okay.
Your property values.
As you have more development come into the county, those, that development is taxed as well. There's not going to be anybody, as long as I'm around, that's going to get a tax break and say, you come to Grand County, you're not going to pay tax. Everybody's going to pay their fair share. And there's been too much of that in the past of people not paying the fair share. It's got us into some bad situations.
Right. That's all I got.
Thanks, Jim. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, Ken.
First of all, I just want to thank Ken Little, City of Dry Ridge. I just want to thank the magistrates, Judge Dills, City of Williamstown, City of Corinth, City of Crettonen for their past participation in all the interlocals up to this point. Six months ago, I came to you all in pleading for more funding. And that, that did not materialize. So, just to sum it up and not make this very long, but this is a funding mechanism for what we failed to do four months ago. To address Mr. Rose's questions, all of the information is provided in the 911 meetings. It's all public record. You're certainly available to come by and get that information at any time. I've had zero requests for that information. Zero. Be glad to share it with you. I will say that these are elected officials, and they have done their job. They've done their due diligence. We elected them to do a job, and they've done it well. I have, I have been audited by these magistrates. I've been totally transparent with all the... I've been totally transparent with all the information, and I believe we passed the test very well. It is very, very expensive to run EMS service. That's why I came to you, to ask for more. The general funds of the cities and the county did not support that, so that's why we're here. That's what we're doing. The City of Dry Ridge does twice as much as surrounding cities with half as much. It's kind of hard to believe, but it's a true statement. We, we operate on a very tight budget, and the men and women that do this job, and they do an excellent job, and the, and the men and women of all the departments in this county do the same great work, but they, they do it because they love it, and we are truly thankful to have them. But we do, we do twice as much with half as much. If you do the run volume, which is over three thousand runs, since we've been doing the center local, it's over ten thousand runs. Just imagine, ten thousand times that, that that ambulance leaves that fire department. That's staggering. And guess what? I can't think of a run that we missed. We subsidize our fire department to handle those EMS runs. There are times when we do not have a, a fire engine in service. That's kind of embarrassing, but it's true. That's the facts of it. And what we're doing is trying to create a mechanism that relieves some of the burden on some of the cities and the, and the county's overall budget to kind of spread it out a little bit. What will happen to Dry Ridge EMS? I would hope that we would keep it in-house and keep it in the county, but that's business. I understand the bid process. These folks, we're asking them to do a job, but we also have to ask them to do it as chiefly and as affordably we can with taxpayer money. That's what we do. And I'm sure that's what they'll do, whoever may serve on that board. The astronomical costs that we're seeing in EMS is three and four times the amount for supplies. The maintenance on the trucks, the cost of an ambulance four years ago was roughly about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. It's currently almost four hundred thousand dollars to date. We need more EMSs. We put about a hundred and forty thousand miles a year on each ambulance. We are busy. These men and women go out and do these runs, some of them are horrific, and guess what? They get right back up and they go and they get in a fire truck to go assist another city, and they just keep going. They need more equipment, we need more staffing, and that takes, that's, there's a price for that. And that's what this is all about. This is a growing pain of Grant County. That's worth, we're experiencing. Again, I want to thank the men and women of all departments in this county for the job they do. I'm especially partial to EMS, fire, and especially police. I'm dedicated, I have been dedicated, to making sure that the citizens of this county are protected as well as we can, and will continue to do so until whatever the future I would hope that services in Dry Ridge. Again, if you would like numbers, I would be glad to share them with you. They're in our audit every year. They're at the 911 board meeting. And I'd be glad to share them if you need them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Anyone else before we close the public hearing?
Name's Kevin Stave, Assistant Chief, EMS Director for the Dry Ridge Fire Department. And just like Mr. Little said, I do want to stand up here and I want to thank you guys and ladies to stay, taking the step forward and getting the funding that we need. It's important. But one thing that I feel like I have to do my due diligence and mention is, with the way this district's going to be created, there's going to be, speaking directly to the magistrates, there's going to be two of you that are going to be sitting on this board. And what I ask is, we have men and women, over forty of them that work for this department, that has dedicated numerous hundreds of days, hours away from their family, that has taken care of this county. They have backbone this county. And I think it's time that the county backbones them. I'm asking you all, as you three magistrates, if you sit on this board, to please take care of my men and women who have served this county. They have done it fearlessly, they have gotten up time and time and seen horrific things, and they deserve it. They deserve their benefits, they deserve their pay. We have, we're diligently to secure these jobs for these individuals and pay them a livable wage. And I beg of you, if you create this district, to keep them in mind, because those are the people that are important. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate what you all do. If, if no one else, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll need a motion to adjourn.